I'd like to call the order to the 1,433rd meeting of the President and Board of Trustees for Machesney Park this 18th day of September 2017. Please rise for the invocation being given this evening by Pastor Lindendorf from Firstborn Ministry and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Trustee Kidd.
Dear Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless these proceedings tonight. We ask that you would give us all a clear mind, Lord, as we make decisions for our community. We ask you to bless our community, bless our nation, and bless our world. We thank you for your gifts and we thank you for all that you've done for us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please take a roll call?
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Sykes.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Kidd.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Clerk is present. The attorney is present.
We have a quorum. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 5th board meeting.
So made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Next we'll have treasurer's report from Michelle Johansson, Finance and Human Resource Manager, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The treasurer's report as of September 11th, 2017 reflects the total of all funds to be $10,993,949.70. A copy of the treasurer's report and also the annual treasurer's report as of April 30th, 2017 are available at the back table. In addition, as of September 3rd, the village has pledged collateral covering 151% of current bank balances, which exceeds the 110% requirement. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
So made.
Second.
Motion and second. All that are in favor of the treasurer's report say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Treasurer's report is approved. Next we'll have communication from Clerk Lori Mitchell.
Thank you, Your Honor. If you'd like to go down to present the proclamation tonight, we're pleased to welcome Peggy Manje Fort from the Daughters of the American Revolution, accepting a mayoral proclamation for the United States Constitution Week. And the proclamation will be read by Trustee Bailey.
Thank you. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2017 marks the 230th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition, excuse me, to this magni-- excuse me, I'm sorry, to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, Steve Johnson, Mayor of the Village of Machesney Park hereby proclaims September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week in Machesney Park and encourages all citizens to reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves.
Thank you so much. You two appreciate the cooperation. Just that we certainly appreciate the National Society and Rockford Chapter, the National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution, appreciate your cooperation in celebrating this Constitution Week with us. It's very important to us. We know that the Constitution is our foundation and we try to live up to it. Thank you very much.
And that's all I have tonight, Your Honor. Thank you. Next we have the warrant, Trustee Erin Wilson.
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening the Administration and Finance Committee met and we did make a motion to authorize warrants totaling $824,189.49. It was a positive recommendation, so I'd like to make a motion to authorize the warrants.
So made. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded approves the bills? Is there any discussion?
Just for clarification, since we have a memo.
Trustee Wilson made the motion. Trustee Kidd seconded the motion.
Thank you. That's right. Thank you for the clarification, yep. Will the clerk please take a roll call?
Trustee Sykes.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Six ayes and no nays.
The bills have been approved. Next on agenda is administrative reports. This last, this past week, we have been very, has been a very exciting times for the village of Machesney Park. We had a ribbon cutting at the Pia Pit located at the town center on Friday. Then we had a groundbreaking ceremony on Thursday with the TLC assisted living in the town center. This multimillion dollar project will bring over 40 new jobs to Machesney Park and surrounding areas. An assisted living facility of this caliber is long overdue in this area. I want to thank the village staff who worked so hard on this project, especially Village Administrator Tim Savage, James Rooker, our Community Development Director, Tom Green, the Village Attorney, and Chris Dopkins, Village Engineer. When I became mayor, this project was in its infancy. A lot of it still needed to be done before we could get to where we are today. I credit these four gentlemen with all their hard work to get this accomplished. I pushed them hard to get answers when we needed them and they exceeded all my expectations. This project has jump-started interest in the town center and the surrounding outlets. I'm expecting big things in the next few years in this area of the Machesney Park. And I would like to thank TLC Illinois for their commitment to the village of Machesney Park by bringing this wonderful project to the town center. The residents are the true beneficiaries of this facility and would, I know that they can't wait till it opens next year. Later this week, I'll be attending Illinois Municipal League Conference in Chicago and I'd like to thank the village for allowing me the opportunity to attend this conference. IML is an excellent way to network with our surrounding communities and learn from each other. IML is a great wealth of information to help every community with their day-to-day Continuing on with the administrative reports, Attorney Tom Green, do you have a report this evening?
None tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Village Administrator, Tim Savage.
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Finance and Human Resource Manager, Michelle Johansson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Sickich has completed and provided reports for the annual audit covering May 1st, 2016 through April 30th, 2017. And here to present those reports and answer any questions is Jim Savio, Partner with Sickich.
Thanks, Michelle. Thank you for inviting me here tonight to present the village's annual financial report for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2017. I also want to start off by thanking Tim and Michelle and the entire staff for all their assistance throughout the entire audit. Things went very smoothly. They were able to answer all our questions and provide us with all the documentation that we requested. And also just want to say that Michelle and her team are really well-prepared. And I just want to say how we, we do appreciate that. It makes the audit a lot less stressful and a lot easier. So just want to point out the great work that her team does. What I'd like to do is point out a few of the highlights of the annual financial report, as well as the communication of deficiencies and internal control and other comments to management, and then answer any questions that you might have. Starting on page one of the annual financial report, page one through three is the independent auditor's report. And these are the only three pages that we, as the auditors, are responsible for. Management is responsible for the rest of the annual financial report. And those responsibilities are listed out here on page one. If you turn over to page two, up at the top is the opinion paragraph. Again, this year we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can provide to the village. Turning over a few pages more to MDNA page one, this is management discussion and analysis prepared by Michelle. Provides a great overview of the village's financial position and changes in financial position for the year. It'll also point out any significant changes that may have occurred throughout the year and provides comparative data that you can't find elsewhere in the report. So I always tell everyone, if you want to read one thing in the, in the 73-page document, to read the MDNA because it provides a good overview of the village's finances. Turning over to page four, actual page four, not MDNA page four, so we don't confuse anyone. Pages four, five, and six are what we call the government-wide financial statements. Statement of net position is on pages four and five, and then the statement of activities is on page six. And this presents the consolidated financial statements of the village, so it includes all of the funds of the village. It's reported on what we call the Economic Resources Measurement Focus and the Full Accrual Basis of Accounting. And what that actually means is it just has a long-term focus, so it has capital assets and long-term debt in the, in the financial statements. And it's similar to what you'd find in a for-profit corporation. And the only thing I'll point out here on page five, the net position unrestricted at the end of the year was about $9.3 million. Prior year it was about $8 million, so $1.3 million increase. And on page six is the statement of activities or the income statement, governments. It's a little bit different of a presentation than a for-profit. You can see we start with expenses on the left-hand side, then we back out any program revenues that are related to those functional expenses to come up with like a net expense or revenue. And then that kind of tells you what's supported by general revenues, which are mostly taxes. And you'll see down at the bottom the change in net position of your net income for the year, positive increase of about $6.9 million. And turning to page seven, pages seven through 12 are what we call the governmental fund financial statements. These are shown by major fund and then all of the rest of the funds are reported in the non-major governmental fund, which is the second column from the right. This is presented on what we call the Current Financial Resources Measurement Focus and the Modified Accrual Basis of Accounting. So what that means is it has a shorter-term focus, more of a budgetary focus, does not include capital assets or long-term debt. One thing I'll point out here on page seven and eight, for your general fund, which is the first column, all the way down at the bottom, your unassigned fund balance is about $5 million. Last year it was about $4.4 million, so increase of about $600,000. And then page 10 is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance or your income statement for governmental funds. Again, the first column is your general fund and you'll see on page 11, net change in fund balance, positive increase of about $775,000. Last year's net in, or net increase in fund balance was about $582,000. And that's after a transfer out of about $793,000. And the last, last thing I'll point out in the annual financial report is on page 42 and 43. This just provides some information on your participation in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. So on page 42 shows the schedule of employer contributions. So you have the actuarially determined contributions, which is what the actuary at IMLF says you have to contribute, and then what you actually contributed, which was 100% of the actuarially determined contribution. And you'll see the contribution as a percentage of payroll was pretty consistent from 2016 to 2017, 10.6% and 10.8% this year. And eventually, these schedules will build out to 10 years of data, so you'll have a 10 years of trend information for this. And then on page 43 shows the schedule of changes in employers' net pension liability and related ratios. So what this shows up at the top is the total pension liability as calculated by the actuary. So this is a liability for pension benefits for all of your employees as of 12/31/2016, which is IMLF's plan year-end. Then down below, about halfway down the page, is the plan fiduciary net position. The, this is the assets that are set aside at IMLF to pay that liability. And then the difference between the two is the employer's net pension liability, which is about 2/3 of the way down the page. And you'll see that decreased about $125,000 this year. And correspondingly, the funded ratio went from about 85% to 87%. So.
Wow.
That's all I have on the annual financial report. The communication of deficiencies and internal control and other comments to management, I'll point out a few things here. If you look at the table of contents, there's some required communication that we have to have with those charged with governance. Very routine this year, nothing out of the ordinary in that communication. Typically after that, we have to report any audit adjustments that we found. I'm happy to say that we had no audit adjustments, so very, very good job again with Michelle and her team. And we also have to report any what we call past adjustments. These are adjustments that are deemed to be immaterial, so they're not booked. We had no past adjustments as well. And turning to the communication of deficiencies on page seven, we had just one deficiency, so no material weaknesses and no significant deficiencies. And just one deficiency you'll see up at the top of the page, and then that was addressed with a new policy that was effective August 1st, 2017. We also issued a one-page management letter that just basically communicates that there were no material weaknesses. You did expend more than $750,000 in federal funds, so we did have a single audit report this year. Again, no findings and no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies found. And then finally, we always issue tax increment financing district two opinions as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of the reports.
Thank you.
That's a great job.
Great.
I don't have anything.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you.
All right.
You need to have permission to accept the audit and replace it and place it on file.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept the audit and place it on file.
So made. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Could the clerk please take a roll call?
Trustee Smith.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Sykes.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays.
Thank you. Next we have Community Development and Community Development Director, James Rooker. Do you have a report this evening?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Your Honor. You may recall that earlier this year, the KFC Long John Silver's at 1586 West Lane in front of Home Depot and Speedway Auto Mall sustained significant fire damage. It was ruled that the fire was accidental and the good news is that the restaurant will be rebuilt. However, it is coming back as Kentucky Fried Chicken only. At the time that the store was developed, both KFC and Long John were under the Yum Brands label, and since that time they have separated. And so the franchise agreements for each of those brands have been adjusted accordingly and only KFC is moving forward. Community development staff has worked with the KFC team to design their plans to comply with current ordinances so they don't need to have any variances or any delays. They plan to start construction this fall. Also, as you've seen, Dunkin' Donuts at North Second and Harlem and the new Ross Dress for Less are under construction. Both stores plan to be open by Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Good news. Thank you. Superintendent of Public Works, Chad Hunter, do you have a report this evening?
No report, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Village Engineer, Chris Dopkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. Update the board on ongoing projects throughout the village. The Illinois 251 Service Drive improvements continue to move forward. 95% of the curb is in place. The contractor's also completed some rough grading behind the curb and has begun to place some of the road stone as well. As everybody knows, we're under a little bit of a delay there because Nycor needs to get in and replace their mains. The good news is, is that it's been released for construction. The bad news is I still don't have a firm date of start of construction from Nycor, but I would expect that to occur in the next week or two. Our contractor will be in to finish up some of the curb gaps and finish up some of the stoning and begin to shape driveways to get them prepped for paving in the next couple of weeks as well. The North Alpine improvements, I'm very pleased to report that the widening at Burden and Marlin is actually ahead of schedule despite the fact that we had to coordinate with AT&amp;T to relocate some of its facilities in the intersection that went extremely well. Hats off to William Charles Construction and AT&amp;T, they, they really worked well together. We're expecting to have that intersection paved and back open to traffic tomorrow afternoon. The contractor's also milled out the pavement between Gateway Drive and the end of the curb and gutter improvements, essentially up by the Armory Driveway. Is working on the driveway approaches this week and next week. We're tentatively penciled in for paving of the final surface on Alpine Road the first week of October, and the project is actually a little bit ahead of schedule at this point. 2017 resurfacing projects, all of our roads have been paved. There's still a little bit of miscellaneous sidewalk work and restoration around the sidewalks to finish up, as well as some shoulder stone to place. We also need to do a walkthrough and a punch list on the entire project, but essentially most of the paving, all the paving's done, and I'd say the project's about 98% complete at this point. At the town center, the contractor's completed the underground work and the core out. Again, I want to say thanks to the North Park Public Water District for their coordination on the project and helping us get that water service stub put in. The curbing and curb islands, the contractor will be working on those this week, and in fact, about 75% of the curb was poured today. The contractor will be stoning and shaping throughout the next week, also getting the rest of the curb in. We'll do some rough grading behind the curb, and if things go well, I foresee us maybe being under paving operations here in the next week and a half to two weeks at the most, so things are really moving out there. Finally, the APP demos, the contractor began its work today on Colonial Drive. A little bit of a slow start, the foundation took a while to get out of the ground, but they'll be moving over to Cadet Road tomorrow, and hopefully we'll have that complete. I would expect work on that project to wrap up next Monday. That's all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next is Student Liaison, Tamaraan Hikoc.
Hi, thank you. It's great to see everyone. There's a lot going on at Harlem right now. We have the girls' powder puff starting up along with the senior boys' dance. Student Council has decorating every Wednesday night for homecoming, and the homecoming dance is October 14th, so everyone's really excited for that. There are fall play tryouts coming up, and I think it's next week that there are parent teacher conferences. Also, last Thursday, Harlem sent around 20 to 25 students to Giordano's for a leadership conference with all the other NIC10 schools, and it was a really great "I gotta go." And we just learned about leadership and it was a really great experience. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Public Safety Supervisor, Lieutenant Doug Bushman.
Thank you, Your Honor. The bimonthly police report covers September 1st through the 14th. At that time, there were 918 calls for service in the village, 260 reports taken, 264 arrests. I'd also like to mention that the Sheriff's Department assisted with Keep Northern Illinois Beautiful this weekend in the practice velocity parking lot. There were over 600 cars came through and about 78 pounds of narcotics were collected and taken off the streets. Thank you, Your Honor.
Very good, yep. Next is Community and Trustee Reports. Does any trustee have a report this evening? Trustee Kidd.
The Public Improvement and Safety Committee met this evening. One record, one resolution, 62R17 will go to the board with a positive recommendation at the next board meeting. And one negative recommendation for a Centar Drive stop sign at both sides of the intersection was a negative recommendation going to the next board meeting. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Trustee Bailey.
Thank you. Last Friday evening, I had the privilege to attend the annual Vietnam Candlelight Remembrance Ceremony for POWs and MIAs. It was held at Loves Park City Hall. If you have never been, I highly recommend it. It was a very humbling experience, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Wilson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Administration Finance Committee met this evening. We have one ordinance and one resolution that received positive recommendations. One of those will go to tonight's board meeting, the other will go to our October 2nd board meeting. And I want to brag on Lori Mitchell, our clerk here, for just a second. With IML approaching, Mayor already mentioned the Illinois Municipal League, several of us will get the opportunity to go. And she's inspired me to work my tail off there. So this year I'll get an opportunity to moderate two sessions. One of those will be getting squeezed by your Budget Explore Cooperative Purchasing, and the other will be the City Council Roundtable event that will happen there at IML. So looking forward to it and thank you, Lori, for your leadership.
Very good. Thank you. Trustee Beck.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank Lieutenant Bushman and his staff for, I brought up the point of we have people that come through the village and do the rolling stop at these stop signs in the residential areas, and I see that there's an improvement in that, so I want to thank him and his, his patrolmen.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none. Next is Consent Agenda. Will the staff please present all items to be considered in the consent agenda?
Thank you. We have item A, Ordinance 2717. It grants a variance to the rear yard setback for the installation of a pool at 6280 Timberline Way, first reading. Item B, Ordinance 2917. It creates a text amendment to the Commercial and Industrial Table of Uses of the Zoning Code to add parks and recreation areas, first reading. Item C, Ordinance 30-17, issuance of a special use permit for a park use in the CG District at 930 Minns Drive, first reading. Item D, Ordinance 3117, creates a text amendment to the zoning code to add pet services use category, first reading. Item E, Ordinance 3217, text amendment to the village code to add requirement to apply and obtain permits for sheds, decks, and permits, first reading. Item F, Resolution 59R17, authorizes execution of the Rockford Mass Transit District Intergovernmental Agreement with the village. And item G, Resolution 61R17, to approve an annual contract for group health insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any items a trustee would like removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately? Trustee Beck.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to take a move, remove ordinance, part E, Ordinance 32-17, and at this time make a motion to send it back to committee.
We have a move.
At this time you're just moving it to the open session?
Yeah, just move it to unfinished, new business.
Okay. Okay. So, item, Ordinance 3217, text amendment to add requirements to apply and obtain permits for sheds, decks, fences, and will be moved to the consent agenda and put under unfinished Is there any others to be considered? Trustee Kidd.
I just want to make sure I understand that it's moved, being moved from the consent agenda to unfinished business. Okay, thank you.
Is there any others? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So made.
Motion second. Will the clerk please take a roll call?
Trustee Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Sykes.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays.
Consent agenda has been approved. Next we have unfinished business, so entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 3217.
Pardon. Thank you, Your Honor. At this time I'd like to take and make a motion to return Ordinance 32-17 back to committee.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please take a roll call.
We need to ask if there's any.
Any discussion?
May I ask why we're doing this?
I don't think it's clear enough, and I want to make sure that the impact on the citizens and contractors that have a deal with us are taken care of.
Anyone else? Will the clerk please take a roll call?
Okay, this is a motion to send it back to committee. Trustee Wilson.
Nay.
Bailey.
Nay.
Beck.
Aye.
Sykes.
Nay.
Smith.
Nay.
Kidd.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Nay.
Five ayes, I'm sorry, two ayes and five nays. It's declined to go back.
So, yep, I'll entertain the motion to approve Ordinance 3217.
So made.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. Could the clerk please take roll call? Any discussion, please? Hearing none. Will the clerk please take roll call?
Okay. Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Nay.
Sykes.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Six ayes and one nay.
Ordinance 3217 has been approved. Having no new business. Next I'll entertain public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board for the good of the village? Hearing none. Next is adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So read, second.
We have a motion and a second. All that are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.